Welcome to the November 3 regular. Board meeting of the West Turlock sub basin. I call this meeting order right at six o'clock. Members of the board are participating in tonight's meeting in person. From the TID boardroom located at three, three, three East Canal Drive. Members of the public may also participate in person or utilize a Zoom webinar feature or by telephone. Members of the public attending virtually will have the opportunity to write public comment. Via the webinar or phone features for those participating via Zoom, please click raise hand button on your screen. For those participating via phone. Please dial star nine. Once your name or other identifying information is called, your line will be unmuted and the public comment period will begin. Let's begin with the flag salute. Stan.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jennifer, if you could call the roll would be great.
Very much. I will go ahead and call the roll. And then if you would give me just a moment or two after that to ensure that my Zoom is connected correctly. I'm getting an error message that's saying something went wrong. So before we move to a public comment period, I just want to make sure that I can see any outside participants. Director Alvarez. Director Kieza. Director Espinoza.
President.
Director Maldonado.
President.
Director Odom.
Here.
Alternate Director Silveira.
Here.
Vice Chair Jiridzma.
Here.
And Chair Alamo.
Present.
Very much. And if you would give me just a moment, my apologies for the technical difficulties.
Would ask if there's any public comment in the room, but. I think everybody. Present here, known public. You are? Yes, you know, perfect. You see anybody with their hand raised?
I can't.
Oh.
I have one more thing, and if that doesn't work, then we may go ahead and rely on your. Viewing ability.
Add in there. Normally. Well, how come, Herb? How come you don't have that access?
Yeah, I mean, there's the one I got the video of the guy, but I. Which, which is.
Participants. I don't see a hand raised though.
Any participants? Just one?
Eleven.
Eleven.
If there's any public hearing us right now. We get our difficulties, we'll go back at any public comment that is not listed in the agenda. So we're going to go ahead and proceed with the staff updates. Michael Clipper, budget update, please.
So for the month of September ending, September. Thirty. For the. Because West Turlock account, we had. Two hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and five cents. And as you can see, the activity we had, we basically received contributions from the members. Then moving on to the basin account. We ended the month with six hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and six dollars and forty-eight cents. We didn't have any activity that day, that month. Any questions? Or you want me to go back to the, our West Turlock account?
As if there's any questions online, but. Have technical difficulties, but. He could not see that.
I see that. Okay.
Bogged out.
Okay. So again, my apologies to those who might be participating online. And as Chair Alamo had indicated earlier, we will make sure to come back to you if there are any public comments throughout. The latter portion of the meeting, once I get connected.
Perfect. No questions. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you.
You're up next as well. No, Michael Cook's up next. Technical Advisory Committee update. You, any Michaels?
My members of the board. Member agencies of the, of the West Turlock GSA will be completing full groundwater. Groundwater level measurements for the, in the first two weeks of November. So we'll have that data to report to, to DWR in December. And these measurements will provide an early indication of the impacts of the drought in the hot summer and early fall. So how we're impacting groundwater levels. Where are the adoption of the GSP? So we'll report back to you once we have that information and let you know what's going on. The consultants are working on the final programmatic EIR, which is the response to public comments. The public comment period closed. We, the comments were limited and we should get an internal draft of the document by early December. We'll get that. Out once it's all complete. On the well permitting side, since your last meeting in August, we have responded to an additional thirty-two well permit applications. Twenty-four in Stansels County and eight in Merced County. That's a total of fifty-six applications this year. And then finally, for the past couple of months, the tax main focus has been developing a grant proposal, which Debbie will cover later on in your agenda. So with that, are there any questions for me on the tack activities?
Thank you, Michael. Communication outreach.
Good evening, directors. I have three quick items to report out on the communications outreach. And the first of which is on our email outreach. An update, we sent seven email campaigns since your last meeting to our sub basin interested parties list. And we now have four hundred and eleven email subscribers. So we're moving up. There's been twenty-four new contacts, new subscribers since your August meeting. Nineteen of which actually are in the past month. So a little bit of an uptick there. Not sure as to what that has been, but most likely related to some of the past emails we sent about the programmatic EIR that was just mentioned by Michael. Second, on an inter, inter basin coordination note, a bit of an update. Some twenty-four representatives from the four sub basins, including ours, Turlock, Modesto. Merced and the Delta Mendota sub basins met virtually on September fifteenth. And the goals of the meeting were to share updates related to sustainable management criteria. And also updates related to some resubmitted GSPs for some other sub basins. As well as to review some survey results from a preliminary interest survey that the Stand Tech team had developed and sent out to. These representatives from other sub basins. It was decided that the goal is to meet again in about six months or so. So sometime in the, toward the second quarter of next year and between the first and second quarter of next year to discuss any new needs and any new updates. And my last piece here is going to be covered a little bit from Debbie when she talks about item G1. And it's about the grant application. We're developing a template letter of support at which we've done in the past. For. Other agencies and NGOs in the area and associate, trade association groups to submit letters of support. Related to the grant application that's going to be sent out or be submitted toward the end of this month. And you're going to hear a lot more about that from Debbie. Other than that, those are my three quick updates for this meeting. Unless there are any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So first of all, we'll go through the consent counter real quick. Anybody want to pull anything from the consent counter? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second. So move second. Think counters move in a second. Any further discussion, comments? Do you know in almost favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Okay, you're up Debbie. Agenda item G1. Ground to Sigma implementation grant application.
And so what we have for you this evening is, is. A brief presentation where I want to walk through the grant application and, and then the proposed. Components that have been developed by the technical advisory committees to include into the grant application. And then. There is an opportunity to take action to authorize this middle of a grant. So. There we go. Oops. Okay, so um. There is a sustainable groundwater management. Implementation grant that is available to apply for, for the sub basins to help further groundwater management. In, in this sub basin and other sub basins within the state of California. It's being administered by the Department of Water Resources. The grant solicitation package came out October fourth and applications are due November thirtieth. There is at last count about two hundred and thirty-one million dollars that is available. To all high and medium priority sub basins to apply for. And. The grant program requires that there be one application per sub basin. And that the applications be within between one and twenty million dollars in, in total. Requests and that would fund. Activities for projects. Between October of this year, so last month through April of twenty twenty-six. There is no cost share that was required for this grant. And the grant could fund a wide variety of implementation activities and projects, include anywhere from planning to construction projects. The funding would be awarded later next spring and then contracting for the grant would be in the fall of twenty twenty-three.
Not required, but is that scorecard give you better grade for a cost sharing? No?
Has no impact whatsoever, which is unusual, but a very good question. Thank you. So um. Let's see. The, the GSAs were aware that, that grant funding would become available this year. And so. We budgeted for assistance to apply for the grant. We have retained Todd Groundwater to assist with preparing and. Application. We worked with Todd Groundwater for the first two grants that the GSAs have retained for, or obtained for. Developing the GSP and then implementing some additional projects to further the, the GSP development. The technical advisory committees have been working together to develop a basin wide application and had formed ad hoc committees to further that process along. The ad hocks have worked with the tax to. Propose a variety of project components for the grant application. And I have a slide for each one, so we'll talk a little more about it. We're also being asked to prioritize the projects if there's multiple components so that. As DWR analyzes the grant application and, and, and awards funds, if they're unable to. Award the entire request, they may award portions of it. And so they're asking for priorities. And so I've listed them here and, and we'll talk about them in level of priority where, where. Asking for the highest priority to be a recharge master plan, followed by monitoring and instrumentation. GSP, various GSP implementation activities and, and filling up data gaps. And then there are some shovel ready projects that, that could be requested for funding as well. So. The recharge master plan. As we embarked upon developing the GSP, I, I think many in the technical advisor committees had thought that, that we would be able to. Move through the development of sustainable management criteria faster than we did. And, and the earlier portions of the GSP so that we could develop more refined. Recharge projects and, and details to incorporate into the GSP. And so the vision here is to move that forward. By developing a more deliberate recharge approach for the sub basin that would maximize all recharge opportunities. In using the various supplies that are available. And so it, this, this planning effort would. Update and refine our, our water availability analysis. So it would refine our climate change analysis with new information that's become available. It would also incorporate. Into the analysis, the. Changing river flow requirements that are anticipated in the future. And so we'd have a more refined understanding about what. Might be available from a river system as well as analysis of, of local recharge opportunities and, and, and water supplies that might be able to be used. And then pair that with analysis of, of available recharge mechanisms. Both within both GSAs as well as when, within ag and urban areas to find ways of. Of making use of available local supplies as well as the, the river supplies to recharge whenever available. So that we can keep water here locally and not, not send it away. In flood events and those types of things and maximize local recharge. So it's. Available. For, for pumping in, in those dryers when we don't have as many, as much surface water available and those kind of things. And so. We anticipate using the tools that have been developed. Over the last few years, we have the groundwater recharge assessment tool or GRAT. That will help to identify locations and mechanisms for recharge and screen those. And then we're also planning on utilizing the groundwater model. Right now we have the model that was developed for the, the GSP that. Is a, is a higher level planning model. And so funding. Under this component would. Help to refine that groundwater model and, and, and make it more specific for our sub basin. And then it will be a planning tool moving forward. So there's, there's a long-term benefit for this. As in addition to, to the benefit to, to this project in and of itself. And then lastly, we're, we're planning on incorporating some pilot projects and some early action plans. So we want to be able to target things. To not only test some of these methodologies, but then also to identify some early actions to get water into the ground as quickly as we can. If we have some, some wet years in the, the coming few years. And so all of that would be incorporated into this project component, along with some outreach to. Garner support as well as understanding about the approaches that we're, we're proposing. So any questions about this particular component? Okay. Um. The second component would take a step towards filling some of our existing data gaps by. Installing monitoring wells as well as transducers. So we have ongoing water level measurements. Both along the rivers as well as within the Westerlaxa Basin GSA. We are using existing funding under our Prop sixty-eight grant to site locations. And I think I've talked about that at, at past meetings. And do some preliminary design work for those. And so the, the ask for this particular grant would be to have funding for installation of those wells. It would also fund the, the purchase of meters for the Easter Luxa Basin GSA as well as development of a metering program for. Installation of those meters would be funded separately. And this is a, an ask from the Easter Luxa Basin GSA for, for implementing theirs, their, their portions of the GSP. It would also include funding for satellite based land use and evapotranspiration or ET data for the sub basin. And that information would feed into our groundwater model and be used for, for other. Work, including on the east side to help kind of evaluate how the, the, the satellite based land use information compares to the, the metered data and that sort of thing. As they move toward a better understanding of, of. Pumping and, and land use over in, in their GSA. And then lastly, it would include some, some outreach as well. So any questions on this component? Okay. The third component. Would provide funding to. Implement some of the other actions that are included within the GSP and, and fill some additional data gaps. So. All of these items were, were identified as things to be done under the GSP. And so this would help fund some of those efforts. The domestic well mitigation plan. Improving our data management system so it's more robust and perhaps even including. An ability to have an interface with our, our website and, and have information online. For example, if we're funded for the transducers, maybe we can have ongoing water level information and those types of things available. There is, is a plan that to, to evaluate and track. Minimum threshold or MT exceedances within the sub basin and an action plan if, if we're getting those exceedances. And so this would develop that as well. It would further analysis of potential groundwater dependent ecosystems or GDEs. As well as, as developing some management actions on. The eastern side of the sub basin for the Easter Luxa Basin GSA. The, the GSP calls for both development of recharge, which would be included in, in the first component I talked about, but also it talks about. Demand management as well. And so that would further those efforts. And. And then lastly, it would support. What I said here is, is, is DWR reporting activities, but that, that includes a wide range of things. We have annual reports that are due. We have water level measurement reporting that is done on an annual basis or actually semi, semi annual basis. As well as. Updates to the GSP that, that will be needed both in twenty twenty-seven and perhaps as DWR is reviewing our existing GSP. And they'll be getting back to us in about a year or so. There may be additional things that might be needed for that. And so this might help fund some of those activities as well as some outreach. So any questions about this component? Okay. And the last component, so all of the, the, the three items that I just went, went through would not total. The twenty million potential for the sub basin. And so there are ongoing. Projects that the TID is, is working through that are shovel ready or near shovel ready. That could be included into the grant application. And I've listed a, a few here. All of them would benefit the sub basin. By either reducing the need for pumping or increasing operational flexibility and potential recharge opportunities. And so TID is working to develop those components and, and then. We would be including. Projects depending on what seemed to work best within the confines of the grant. To score well and, and provide benefit to the sub basin. And so. So there are those options as well. So those are, those are the, the four components that, that, that we are proposing to incorporate into the grant application for this round. Applications again need to demonstrate that, that we're coordinating sub basin wide. And I think we have the ability to do that. There needs to be one grant applicant. And as with past grants, Easter lock has asked the Westerlaxa Basin to consider being the grant applicant. For the sub basin and to administer the grant on behalf of the sub basin. And so you have before you, for your consideration, a resolution that would enable that. It's required with the grant application to submit a resolution documenting that. We would, we have the authority to submit the grant application on behalf of the sub basin that. We have the ability to execute that grant if awarded the funding and that we have the ability to carry out the responsibilities under the grant. And so the proposed resolution before you would authorize the chair or his designate to. To take the, each of those actions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Well, at this time I am still participating as a member of the public. So it's myself and Wes Miller as the only two members of the public participating online. Otherwise it's you as panelists and or staff members. So we haven't had anyone that has not been able to gain access because we do have other controls in place to where. Our IT staff would be able to see if we had any members of the public. And so at this time, we don't have any public comment. Those that were participating earlier, if there was an opportunity, they would have been able to see their hands raised, but we haven't had anyone else for the duration of the meeting.
How much of questions for Debbie here?
Yeah, it's backing up a few slides, but when you were talking about meters on the east side. For who?
Um. The growers that are, that are out in those areas.
Up for private domestic wells.
Not that I know of. Yeah.
Um. Question. There's some, like I have two wells on my property. So is, is. Obviously I'm not using both, but if I did, would, would you be paying the, the price for both or just one? Or be responsible for, for one?
Is, is it in?
I know the east, but we have ranches in the east too. So it was just.
So this would just be in the Easter Luxa Basin GSA. I, I don't believe the Westerlaxa Basin is considering meters at this time, although it could, it should have wished to. But what is envisioned to be included is, is the purchase of the meter. So East Turlock would then purchase meters. That they would work with the individual growers to install and, and each well is situated differently. And so the reason we're not. Proposing to include installation of the meters in the grant application is it's difficult to estimate what the cost might be because. You have to have a certain straight amount of pipe and other things to make it work. And, and we don't know all the configurations out in that area to be able to. Estimate well those costs. Or there might be issues to try to get it done within the timeframe of the grant. And the grant requires that you be able to. Meet all the grant requirements and do everything you say you're going to do and demonstrate that you can do that. And, and for that one, it's, it's a little more difficult. And so that's why we're just proposing development of a program. And so that's why we're just proposing development of a program and installation or purchase of, of meters themselves that could then be installed.
For every work, say some, a lot of bigger farms have several, right?
Yeah, and, and, and I think that they would likely purchase a variety of them that would meet a variety of needs. And I think as, as we move forward, they would probably identify the numbers that would, they would be needing and purchasing all of that. And so there's, there's going to be an estimate incorporated and we're still working on the costs of all of these. That would be incorporated into the grant. And I can't guarantee that all of the meters would be able to be purchased with that. Perhaps there might be funding that would be needed from East Turlock to, you know, supplement it. Or maybe there might be extra meters in case some fail, you know? I mean, there, there may be some of that as well. Yeah. But that process will be developed, I guess, through this process. So I don't have all the details. I wish I, I did for you. Does that make sense though?
That's fine.
Has to be completed by April of 2026. And, and also the they've been very clear that, that, that they don't want to leave money on the table. So they want to make sure that you're going to use it and that you can complete the work. Because a lot of it is general funds and those general funds, if they're not used, it goes back. And so they want to make sure that it's benefiting sub basins because there's a lot of need out there. Yeah.
Yeah, and I assume there's going to be a lot of holdouts and obviously, and you know, we want to make sure that they know that this can be high penalties in case they don't, you know, put the meters on.
Well, and those are all up to East Turlock, you know, in, in developing that program. And, and what the requirements are going to look like and, and all of that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Debbie?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Proper movement seconded. Route two signal application grant application. Further discussion, comment?
Director Alvarez? Director Espinoza?
Yes.
Director Maldonado?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry about that. Excuse me. I just had a little, I'm having a lot of technical difficulties tonight. The computer and personal difficulty. So please forgive me for that. Director Odom?
Yes.
Alternate Director Silveira?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jerritzma?
Yes.
And Chair Alamo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Moving on, agenda item number eight. Any comments from the directors, board of directors here, board members? Good comments? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. We have one item to discuss.
So move.
Hey, we're now in closed session. Are we going to meet right here? Zoom meeting in the closed session?
Probably because we have Zoom and since it, it will say that we're currently in closed session. We do have the ability to mute it, but if we feel, we'd probably have a little bit more security if we just went upstairs to the 203. But that's entirely up to you. Because we will keep it, we do have to keep the Zoom rolling so that if we do have a reportable action that we can come back in and open up to open session. So it would be whatever your most comfortable way.
Are you secure? Can you turn the mute on?
I can, I can confirm with IT that.
Yeah, confirm with IT. Plus, there's only the three people from TID on right now, it sounds like. I would like to report out that there's no action taken in closed session. With that, I would adjourn the meeting at 7:11 and I will see you all at our next regular schedule. More meeting unless there's a need for a special one. Thank you, guys.